Let me call this meeting to order of the Planning Commission, Bloomfield Township, for August 5th. Welcome all of you to be here tonight. Just in case you don't know what we do, anybody on TV, we're a seven-member body appointed by the township board. It's a recommending body only. We can vote here what we think, and it's only recommending to the Board of Trustees. They make the final decisions on any of this. They have the final say in any matters involving site plan review. We have a quorum here tonight. We have five of us here, there's seven. One, two, three, four, five. Okay. We need four votes in the affirmative to pass anything. Always have the majority of the total has to pass. And so, anyway, that's just a little overview of what we do and what we're doing tonight. We have several things on the agenda. We have a public hearing to consider the extended hours of operation for Fit Body Boot Camp at 1539 Updike Road. An introduction for proposed amendments relating to the current liquor license requirements for gas stations and retail package outlets. The purpose of this is just to set a public hearing, but we want to hear opinions, we want to hear what's going on, we'll get a presentation, but we're just going to set a hearing. The same with the next one, an introduction for a proposed amendment to allow indoor recreational restaurant uses with a liquor license. And thirdly, an introduction of a proposal by Tea Times, an indoor golf simulation restaurant use that seeks a classy liquor license and extended hours of operation. Well, I said affirmative vote of four people is required. And so, with that, I said we took attendance, we have quorum, we can do business. Next item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of March 18th. Holy Mac, really? I didn't even look at that. Okay, well, I didn't realize the date was so far back. Any...
Approved.
Moved and seconded. All those in... Wait. You have somebody...
Who made the motion to move? Bruce Distick?
Selig made the motion.
Thank you.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, approval, a motion to approve the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That takes care of the housekeeping. Next, we'll hear, I guess Patty, are you going to do the presentation?
Yes, sir.
The site plan reviews.
Public comment.
Huh?
Public comment.
You're right. Well, it says public comment, you're right. I'm sorry. I always forget to do that. If there's anybody like to make a comment on anything at all, it doesn't have to be on the agenda, it could be, or anything at all, now's the chance to do that. You'll have an opportunity to talk about each of the items as well, when that time comes, but... Thank you, sorry, I forgot about that. Okay, so we don't see any public comments, so we'll close that. And now we'll go to the site plan review, special land use for Fit Body Boot Camp at 1539 Updike Road.
All right. So this request before you is seeking approval to extend their hours of operation for this exercise studio. We're at the Updike and South Boulevard Shopping Center, known as the Bloomfield Hills Shopping Center, on the northeast, excuse me, the southeast corner, and the tenant space is identified by the arrow. This is a vacant space that is accommodating a Fit Body Boot Camp exercise facility, studio, who would like to have their hours of operation from 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, and Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. They have additional hours on Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Excuse me. Anytime that hours extend beyond 7:00 a.m. or later than 9:00 p.m., require a special land use approval by the township board after the planning commission has held a public hearing and forwarded out a recommendation. The highlight of this proposal is that it is a use that is permitted through recommendations from the master plan, permitted in the B1 district. It also complies with the provisions relative to this particular classification. The hours will not impact the current parking layout or circulation or the access of the shopping center. I can just go back and look at that. The closest residential area is approximately 240 feet away, then the Bloomfield Fox Hills subdivision. There's no additional site improvements, other than their accommodation and with the hours that the planning commission is being asked to consider, the extended hours, and looking at other businesses, they range roughly between 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. So this would be a little bit earlier than some of the other operations, but there are some 24-hour operations, not within Bloomfield Township, but at the adjacent communities, that's to the north and to the west of that Updike and South Boulevard intersection. They have represented that these additional hours will offer operational impact of the extended hours to best meet the client's needs, as they are anticipating the first session to be offered at 5:00 a.m. I'm assuming all of us will be there at 5:00 a.m. along with them, trying to get to our exercise levels here. And it is a smaller tenant space, 2,525 square feet. The shopping center has 327 parking spaces, there's no impact regarding the use, nor do we think at that hour, at a 5:00 a.m. hour. Just highlighting the report, there's been no issues raised by any of our departments, nor representation of this use and the hours impacting any of the adjacent residential community, nor even the commercial businesses adjacent. So on July 17th, there was a design review board meeting, which time the board heard the request for the extended hours and forward a unanimous motion on to the planning commission, which in turn, the planning commission is now, tonight, looking to consider this request and then forward on your recommendation on to the township board, who will take final action on the hours of operation. So the use is a permitted use, the location is permitted by the zone district, it's the hours for which they are before you this evening, and I don't believe the applicant is here, so if I can answer any questions, or I know the report and their submission is pretty thorough on their business plan, that's part of their packet.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Does the operation open for business, or not yet?
I believe they are, if it's not, they're working towards it.
I was just going to ask, just for my own information, why would you close at 11:00 on Friday? 11:00 a.m.?
That...
Okay, I don't know, you can add. I was going to ask them, just because that's interesting. Close at 11:00 in the morning on a Friday. Okay. All right. Any other questions?
No one.
Okay, what's the board's pleasure, then? Well, is there going to be a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Did he make the motion?
He just moved, approve it as presented. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Very good. The next, introduction of proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance relating to liquor
So this evening, the planning commission is being asked to consider holding a discussion and considering some amendments to the zoning ordinance as it relates to automobile service stations and retail package outlets, evolving around the conversation about liquor licenses. And I indicated in my report, back in April, the Board of Trustees asked for me to prepare a summary of the liquor license provisions of the ordinance, our process, and the degree that the provisions have been followed through more recent history as it relates to restaurants and other uses. And the report highlighted that, when it came to gas stations, even though there were amendments to the automobile service station provisions, that we have not had an application come before the township requesting such a license because of circumstances or challenges with the provisions. That coupled with conversations relating to, over the last several years, of businesses coming to the township and asking, you know, if we were to pursue this particular type of business, would there be an opportunity for a liquor license to be accompanying, you know, that business plan? And in some cases, in many cases, because the provisions aren't found in our ordinance, it's not allowed. So unless it's specifically stated in our ordinance, we can't act on or proceed with a request, whether it's a liquor license or other land use. And so, through the course of the discussion by the township board, they felt that it's really time and an opportunity to look at our current provisions, noting that we have, over in the recent past, been approached by several of the automotive, or the automobile service stations, also with some other more recreational or entertainment-type uses. And so, honing in on, one topic was the automobile service station. And so the township board very specifically asked for us to take a look at those provisions and forward that discussion on to the planning commission, for you to have a discussion, consider the amendments that staff are asking for you to consider, and then holding that public hearing. The other part of the request before you is addressing that within the use itself, which is automotive service stations, which we finally call gas stations, there are some different types of circumstances that we might want to have a conversation about regarding gas stations in the township, their location, their zoning. And so that led to wanting to be as specific as we could, and having the board understand where those criteria fall within our ordinance. And so, if we just briefly look at gas stations, they're only permitted in the B3 district. And if, when they're permitted in the B3 district, they have to meet these criteria. So they can sell gas, they also can sell automotive items, convenience items, they can have incidental auto service work associated with that gas station, their ingress and egress has to be laid out in such a way that it doesn't cause any traffic hazards, the driveways, as in ingress/egress, has to be a minimum 25 feet from an intersection, for safety. And then lastly, the minimum lot area of 22,500 square feet, or 0.51 acres, with adequate onsite queuing. So the gas stations is our, this is a standard requirement for our gas stations. Referencing retail package outlets, we have several in the community that are retail package outlets, and primarily it's those businesses that are permitted to sell alcohol beverages onsite, for onsite, excuse me, off-site consumption, let's emphasize that, for off-site consumption, in either the B2 or the B3 district. Presently, we have two criteria. One, it has to be at least 750 feet from a school property, by the shortest distance of travel. And secondly, that an SDD license shall not exceed the one for each 3,000 population, which is the quota standard out of the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. SDM refers to the sale of packaged beer and wine for off-site consumption, and SDD is the sale of packaged beer, wine, and/or liquor for off-site consumption. So we're going to be using those terms, SDD and SDM interchangeably, through our discussion tonight. When the ordinance was amended to allow gas stations to apply for a liquor license, it was determined that should all of the following criteria be met, that they would be eligible to apply for a special land use with the township. And those standards, in addition to those that we just previously read, include a minimum of 50 feet from the cash register to the fuel pumps, no drive-through operation, a minimum of 4,000-square-foot building with one parking space per 200 square feet of building, the frontage on a major thoroughfare, no service or repair operations, not adjacent to a residentially zoned property, minimum one-acre parcel for a single user, and then one or both of these conditions, either it's located in neighborhood shopping center, or there's a minimum 250,000 inventory on premises excluding the alcohol beverages. So with these current conditions, or standards, criteria, we have not had an application come before the township to propose a liquor license at their facility. So this is the map of all 12 of our gas stations in the township. It's part of your proposal, in your packet. I've highlighted the areas a little bit more definitively with the blue circles, and as you can see, you know, they are always at a major intersection or along our more major thoroughfare. And the next chart is going to speak very specifically about each and every one of these locations. Now, you've all had an opportunity to review this chart. This was a way to summarize the locations within the township, and highlight for you some of the existing conditions that might answer maybe some of the questions of why haven't we had a request come before the township. First of all, as I noted earlier, gas stations are only permitted in the B3 district. Well, of those 12, we actually have eight that are Zone B3, there's five that are not. Those gas stations were in existence prior to the ordinance establishing the locations for gas stations, so they're existing non-conforming. That means that they can remain, they can make improvements, they can make modifications, they can make enhancements, but if there's any enlargement of activity or expansion of the business operation, that would require a variance. The chart also hopes to convey that, in addition to that B3 district, which is the third column, the B3 district, the heading is in green at the top, the other criteria in the B3 is that it has to fall within the, has to be located on property that is 0.51 acres. And so, again, because we have had some gas stations that were in existence prior to these ordinance provisions, these earlier ordinance provisions, there are indeed some applications, or locations, even in, that are Zone B3, that don't meet that 0.51 acres. So that has then resulted in now five locations in the township of the 12 actually fall within the B3 district, are compliant, and are compliant uses in the B3 district. The rest of the chart called out some of the standards that brought most of the conversation from the township board, and that had to do with the fact that presently, we have a one-acre requirement for a gas station seeking a liquor license. Of the 12 gas stations that we have, only one meets that one-acre minimum, and that's the Costco off of Telegraph North of Square Lake. The others are deficient. The column to the right of the lot size is the minimum 4,000-square-foot building size for a gas station seeking a SDD or SDM. You'll notice in that column that none of the, nothing is highlighted, that all of those locations fall short of that 4,000-square-foot building size minimum criteria. The next column is identifying that an SDD or an SDM license cannot be adjacent to residential districts, and there is one location within the township, it's the Marathon, that's at Woodward and Square Lake, actually does immediately abut adjacent residential, and so they would not comply with that criteria. And then, continuing on, the SDD or SDM having no drive-through, we do have one location within the township, the gas station at Telegraph in Maple, 6495 Telegraph, that does have a drive-through, that's the Tim Hortons associated with that gas station. And the very last column addresses that with an SDD or SDM license, no vehicular service or repair would be permitted. In that instance, we do have two locations, the Marathon at Woodward and Square Lake does have service, and so does the gas station at Telegraph and Long Lake, the BP Gas Station. So this helps you see in a summary form, as we narrow down the B3 district, how it complies with the gas station standards, but then how do they comply with the standards relevant to seeking a liquor license, that we really are now down to five that have the potential, and that's if one eliminates their drive-through and the other eliminates their service, so really we're down to three locations. And that would be, you know, should there be an interest to eliminate the lot size and the building size limitations of one acre and 4,000 respectively, then the mobile gas station at Woodward and Square Lake, the Costco gas station at Square Lake and Telegraph, and the gas station 6490 Telegraph Shell, 6490 Telegraph, would also be eligible. And when I say eligible, that does mean that, in addition to the criteria being maybe amended, reflective of allowing for an SDD or SDM, but we also have those site limitations or site constraints that we're all very familiar with. Every building has building setbacks, parking requirements, parking setbacks, amount of landscape and green belt, loading spaces, and general circulation. All of those are the traditional site elements that are part of and build into a final site plan proposal. So each of those sites that even I referenced would still have to undergo that type of level of scrutiny and analysis, whether they would comply with the provisions of the B3 district, the gas station criteria, and then a gas station seeking a liquor license. The first two columns, just to complete this chart, speaks to our retail package outlet provisions in our ordinance. The township defines, you know, the criteria allowing for the sale of packaged liquor as permitted either in the B2 or B3 district. I think we're very familiar with, you know, the, our grocery stores, our markets, our pharmacies, and, you know, even some of our restaurants and so forth, do, are considered and do hold their SDD or SDM licenses. If they fall within the B3, they're compliant. If they're in the B2, they're compliant. If they're in the B1, they are not. And so it does help, just in looking at, again, the criteria and looking at those five locations that we were looking at a little earlier, those five do fall within the B3, and it would be permitted as a retail package outlet, for example. And also, the criteria in the retail package outlet also speaks to a distance of 750 feet from a school. And if you look and equate the gas station that is offering the opportunity for packaged liquor sales to, very similar to a retail package outlet, you'd want those standards to be the same. And so there is, I'm going further into the report, that should there be an interest in pursuing an amendment to the liquor license provisions for a gas station, that we include that 750-foot distance between a gas station with a packaged liquor sale and schools. So that's why the reference was added in that chart. So with all that information, and obviously you've read the reports that we put together and the copies within the ordinance, so you can see the language specifically that we've been drawing from, that there appears to be opportunity for the board to consider some ordinance amendments for gas stations to sell liquor, packaged liquor. And I'd like just to highlight some for your consideration tonight. Revise the distance from sales to fuel pumps from 50 feet to 5 feet. This is a little bit of housekeeping. The Michigan Liquor Control Commission actually amended their ordinance and reduced it from 50 feet to 5 feet. That's what that reference initially was several years ago. And so to be consistent, that, you know, we should reference that criteria, so that's the suggestion, is revise it to 5 feet. Eliminate the minimum 4,000-square-foot building, as I indicated, that constraint of a building size is going to be inherent with any type of development on our parcels that we presently have in the township. There's only so much building that you can build to be able to then further comply with all the other criteria that is part of that recipe, if you will, of a site plan. The third is revise the parking to one parking space per 300. This is to be consistent with the provisions of our parking standards. Gas stations are required to provide parking onsite for one parking space for every 300 square feet of gross floor area. The existing language relevant to the former standards for, or the standards for liquor licenses, said one for 200. So this was a, actually a conundrum, because if we were to allow for that retail sales, which is like a retail operation, and we were to require that gas station owner now to go from one for 300 to go one for 200, most of our gas stations are literally just on the money when it comes to meeting all the parking requirements onsite. So immediately, if they were to seek a liquor license, they'd be non-conforming, because we'd be requiring even more parking, just to have that liquor license onsite, and that doesn't make sense. So to be consistent, reverting it back to one for 300 is the recommendation, so that every gas station, no matter if you sell liquor, or, you know, any other, you know, host of convenient items, you'll all have the same one-for-300 parking standard. Number four, eliminate the minimum one-acre parcel for a single user, I think we talked about that. Five, at a minimum distance to any school property, again, that was that reference to 750 feet. With the retail package outlet going to that section of the ordinance, and referencing back the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, the Liquor Control Commission established for SDDs a provision of one for every 300, 3,000 population for the community, for the township. However, the Liquor Control Commission has amended their provisions and allows transfers from another community to come into the township, and in fact, exceed whatever that threshold or that standard is. So we're not reducing our threshold, but should somebody want to bring in a license, in fact, it would actually be exceeding that criteria. So the Michigan Liquor Control Commission has that provision, that, you know, they'll be monitoring, that's actually their requirement, we would maintain, we would eliminate that, and obviously emphasize and look at the state to meet that criteria. So briefly, the ordinance amendment draft has been prepared. This is an introduction only. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding, you know, how we came upon the language, but as you follow along, and you follow the considerations that we have in the presentation, you'll see how we amended the language, so that it's reflective of the comments that we made this evening, both in the draft ordinance 690, and in the draft ordinance 692, and that's referencing the retail package outlets. So I know we have a lot of information that's been given to you, we have the chart that hopefully was able to maybe answer some questions that you might have had, and then just looking at the zoning map and seeing where do we have all our locations, and, you know, if that was to pursue, you know, it really would be a dispersal of locations, and not a concentration, if you kind of look at, you know, the placement of those gas stations throughout the township. So... So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? I have some questions. Go ahead.
Question number one, the 50 feet to 5 feet, you said that was already changed by the state of Michigan?
Yes.
Okay. And the proposal to eliminate the minimum size of 4,000, is it suggested that it be no minimum or reduce the minimum? Because, for example, you say we have 12 in the township?
Yes.
Are the 12 stations now, you know, 1,000, 1,500? We don't want it to be a 300-square-foot building. So are we planning to reduce the minimum or not have any minimum at all?
What's being suggested is that there's no minimum. If you look at the square footage, it ranges from 3,891, but that's the Costco kiosk, which is the 91 square feet. But that aside, it ranges from 3,800 to maybe as low as 1,000, and that's the nonconforming at the mobile gas station at Telegraph and Long Lake. But looking at some of these numbers, 3,800, 1,200, 2,000, 2,000, 1,300, 2,300, 3,200, 24, 21, 25. So there is a little variety. But again, to be able to suggest a building size when these lot sizes are very varied, and there's so many limitations to where that building is sited on the property. Do they have two me's of ingress and egress because they're on a corner lot? What type of circulation do they have? Those are the constraints that's going to define what that building is. So the approach was more defining, having that set the tone and set the scale, as opposed to requiring a minimum square footage. That was the rationale.
The minimum, I mean, in my opinion, it could be a low minimum, but to have no minimum, I don't agree with.
Okay.
But that's just my opinion.
Okay.
So the standard for the parking is already one per 300 for any gas station, but it was conflicting in the ordinance for SDD or SDM.
That's correct.
So we're just making it the same.
Correct.
That I get. The lot size, once again, we're suggesting to eliminate the minimum size and not have any minimum, but like you said, it'll be dictated by setbacks, parking, and things like that. And also, when the state eliminated the requirement of one per 3,000, do they not have any requirement or did they come up with a different number?
No, they didn't eliminate the one for 3,000. They amended it and allowed for licenses to be transferred into the township for you to exceed that total. And I provided you a printout from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, and it says for SDD, which is on premises, excuse me, SDD off premises, we're allowed 15. We've issued 15. Somebody could transfer an SDD license into the township and exceed that 15, and that is permitted. Our zoning ordinance statement is a prior standard that the MLCC had. That was never amended. So by eliminating that criteria from our provisions, doesn't eliminate it from the Liquor Control Commission following it. It would require that those outlets would always have to go to the ZBA and seek a variance, because anytime anyone that wants to come in presently and exceed the 15 that we've issued would have to get a variance, because that says eliminate the, well, the provision says cannot exceed the one for 3,000.
So I'm just trying to understand, technically speaking, we eliminate the one per 3,000, and that allows others to transfer them into the township. And I don't know if it's limited to the county, Oakland County or anywhere in the state, but that's besides the point. So we could have 30 instead of 15? In other words, because there's no limit on our side and there's no limit on the state?
Correct. And because in our ordinance, it says an SDD license shall not exceed one for 3,000, then we would not be able to bring somebody else in unless they went to the ZBA and got a variance, because the standard says you can't exceed that one for 3,000. But the state law says you can. So we're conflicting with the state law.
So you're bringing it into alignment, pretty much?
Exactly.
But the state has the right to allow as many as they want to be transferred in if our ordinance?
That's my understanding.
I don't know how that works. I mean, in theory, you could have 40 of them, and then people that have them would be unfair. You know, there'd be too many of them, and it wouldn't make it viable. I would think that if I held one of them, I'd want there to be, reducing the one in 3,000 so that there could be more, but not having so many that it makes the other ones worthless, because there's only so much, so many transactions you could do within the township, and I think having it unlimited is not a good idea.
I'll notice under the SDM that we're allowed 45. We've only issued 19, and there's 26 available. So there is a supply, at least for SDMs.
Right.
Still available in the township.
Yes, the state has the ultimate authority there. We're just going in line with that. I don't think, could we be more restrictive than the state or not?
I believe we can.
Okay. Just a question. I don't know if we want to be.
I think you already are.
Yeah, we are. We already are.
Right. Well, under the new interpretation, where you can transfer in new ones, existing ones, you mean?
Well, we have been historically more restrictive.
All right.
The Liquor Control Commission does, even in their license, says that the holder still has to meet all local requirements from the municipality. So there's a caveat to any licensing that they issue, that it doesn't dismiss their obligation to seek any local reviews and approvals.
Did it?
No.
Anybody over here?
Yes.
Go ahead, Neil.
A few things. One, I noticed there was not a report from our police department as far as their position on this, so I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
As far as concerns about increased crime or not. Also, I think it'd be helpful if we can get some data from Birmingham with their gas stations that sell beer, wine, and liquor, if it results in increased police calls, public safety calls to those gas stations. I was surprised to see, to be quite frank, I was surprised to see that liquor was included with this. My understanding early on, it was going to be for beer and wine, so I do have a concern about that. I think we're taking something that is rather restrictive right now to something that's opening it up much more than was represented, I think, to many of us. So that's going to be an issue for me. Beer and wine, depending on the narrowness of how it's crafted, that's something I might be able to work with, but I still think it's too broad for me to accept this. I do agree with you, Richie, that having the minimum building size is an important part of this criterion formula. Looking at these, I can see where a few of them would meet the criteria and to be quite, I want to keep it rather restrictive. So if we approve this, I don't want to have all of these gas stations that are selling beer, wine, and possibly liquor. I just think it's going from one extreme to the other, and that's not what we had approved here historically. And I think I don't want to, certainly personally, I don't want to go from one extreme to the other. So, you know, looking at the minimums we have here, we certainly would have a couple that meet the criteria if we even allowed, you know, if we required a minimum of 2,300 square feet. That would result in, for example, one of the Shell stations on the east side, on the west side of Telegraph, and the new mobile station that's being built on Woodward and Square Lake, and possibly the other Shell station on Telegraph and Maple if there wasn't a drive-through. So I think it's important to consider those, and I don't believe this was included in our strategic plan, which probably would have been a good idea, because this is a major change of policy for the township. And I'm just, again, not to say that I can't be persuaded under the right circumstances to give it consideration, but the way it's set up right now, I think we need to be more restrictive to get approval, not only for me, but I think many other board members on the Board of Trustees.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
I tend to be very empathetic to what was just stated. We've been through some of this years ago, and I believe in restrictive-type considerations as well, so.
Okay. All right. We can hear on this from anybody from the audience. If you'd like to come up to the microphone, name an address, limited to three minutes, come up and tell us what you think.
Hello, my name is Chris Barbat. I live in Bloomfield Hills. I have worked at a gas station since I was 13 until today, so I can shed a lot of insight on the evolution of what gas stations are and how they have evolved. For instance, the current ordinance, you know, labels it as an automobile service station, and as she pointed out, two of the 12 service automobiles. Automobiles are serviced at the dealership, per warranty, per their lease. So they're no longer automobile service stations, they're convenience stores, really. And you mentioned something about increase in police calls. We submitted, I'm the owner of the gas station in Bloomfield Hills, we submitted a letter from the chief of police at Grosse Pointe when we got our liquor, or beer, wine, and liquor license in Grosse Pointe, and he wrote a letter and we submitted that stated that all police incidences have not increased, no issues at all with adding the license to our location, and actually, the calls have gone down, believe it or not, because we cleared out the windows, we increased the lighting, we increased the security, and there's more traffic and actually brought down incidents at our site. And ever since COVID, there has been a drive away from large parking lots, large lines in the grocery stores, and people are looking more for convenience, which is what our stations are. We're located on hard corners. We have, you know, big, open windows. People can see in, people can see out. It's no longer the stigma of what it used to be to go in and getting packaged alcohol with the little liquor store tucked away in the corner of a shopping center with signs that are blocking the windows and the visibility. It's really evolved since then. It's become an amenity for a lot of cities. If you look at all of our surrounding cities, West Bloomfield, Birmingham, Rochester, Auburn Hills, every one of them now allow automobile service stations or convenience stores with gas pumps, is what I call them, to sell alcohol. And it's become an amenity, and people want that convenience nowadays. And I think it's going to be amenity for Bloomfield. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you have any questions?
I just have one question.
Sure.
You have many of them, and I know all about yours. So what's the minimum, or what's the average size of them? Would you be able to survive if one of them was 700 square feet or 1,000 square feet?
Our model's different. We own the two stations, the Maple and Telegraph. We own the station in Maple and Lasser. We like the larger station, the all-in-one-stop shop. That's more convenient. You can get firewood, you can get ice, you can get fresh Dunkin' Donuts, you know, delivered daily. So our stations are larger. Our stores are bigger than most of them around town. That's why I think it's a really good fit at our sites. I can't speak for the other sites around town, and the 700-square-foot, 500-square-foot, I cannot speak for them. I don't know how they would fit it, honestly, because the categories have evolved. You were speaking about liquor. Well, you know, liquor has evolved, that term now, you know, mothers like espresso after the kids come, you know, sometimes when they're stressed out, and there's ready-to-drinks that you just pour on ice with espresso, and that's considered liquor. It's no longer, you know, just tequila and vodka. So the categories have gotten larger. You need to have a good selection, be that all-in-one-stop shop, and it's an amenity nowadays and residents that I have spoken to, and I've spoken to hundreds, because I went to school at Bloomfield Hills and over, and I've been in Bloomfield my whole life. And, you know, a lot of people from the schools that I go to, on a Friday, they just want to get a bottle of wine on the way home, and they don't want to have to go out to dinner or go to a grocery store. It's the convenience factor that they're looking for, and you could do it safely nowadays. Our POS systems do not allow any sales unless you scan an ID. If you're 50 years old and you don't have an ID, the system won't allow that transaction to go through. So, you know, things have evolved, again, with the POS and the safety and our surveillance and our monitoring and our education of our staff. All of our staff has to go through TIPS, which is the State of Michigan Alcohol Training, on when to sell, how to spot an ID, a fake ID. So it's just, has grown and evolved a lot. Like I said, all the surrounding cities have opted in. I have stations in surrounding cities, in Birmingham, in Rochester, and I don't see any opposition. I only see favorship towards, you know, the category adding to the convenience store.
So for example, and again, I understand you don't want to speak for others, but the two stations you have, Say Plus Maple and Lasser, are they 2,000 square feet? Are they 1,500 square feet?
They're all over 3,000 square foot.
All three of them?
All three of them.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Thank you for that overarching point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Remember, this is just to propose a hearing, to have a hearing, and you'll all have an opportunity, again, to make your statement, say anything you want. So I don't see anybody else jumping to their feet. So bring it back here.
I forgot to ask one more question for Patty. Are we getting rid of the inventory requirement as well?
No, we are not. The, excuse me, let me get to that page.
The $250,000.
The language still remains, and that section is not even amended. So it reads, either the following conditions exist: the applicant or licensee is located in neighborhood shopping center composed of one or more commercial establishments, or two, the applicant or licensee maintains a minimum inventory on the premises excluding alcohol, liquor, and motor vehicle fuel of not less than $200,000 at cost of these goods and services customarily marketed by approved types of businesses. So that would remain.
Would it be possible to ask the speaker if that would work for his, I don't know what the inventory is, because that's exclusive of the alcohol, correct?
Correct.
Does that make sense, that you could have 250,000? You said 200, but this says 250, so.
250.
Okay.
If I misspoke, I apologize.
If you don't mind.
No, 250,000.
I'd like an opinion if that's possible.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Pardon me?
Could you repeat the question?
The question is, if this discussion went forward, and we didn't have a minimum building size, and we took away the one per 3,000, you would still have to have in your stores, exclusive of the alcohol, that you're going to start carrying 250,000 in inventory? Is that possible?
So the Michigan Liquor Control, and I'm a liquor, Michigan Liquor Control attorney as well, they've always never understood why that law was put in place. And they found out later on, it was lobbyists from Myers to exclude all the other smaller stations, and they had the inventory. It really is not safe, because everyone started to just fill up cigarettes in their back room, and it became kind of scary to have $150,000 in cigarettes in the back room. Some people started doing things like buying $150,000 in stamps and putting them in their safe, because the stores are rather small and it's really hard. I mean, what are you going to put in there, really? And a convenience store to add up to that inventory. So it doesn't make much sense, and you ask yourself, what's the purpose of it? What is adding a high inventory requirement going to do for our cause? There's other ways of achieving the board's intent, rather than stocking a little store with hundreds of thousands of dollars of inventory that's really not going to be sufficient. with hundreds of thousands of inventory that's really not going to be sold, and it's just there to comply with a rule.
Unfortunately, if I could just add, it is a state requirement, so it's beyond our requirements.
Oh, it is a state requirement.
It is a state requirement.
We can't do anything about it.
So both the five feet from the point where motor vehicle fuel is dispensed, and also the 250,000 value.
Okay.
And that's in your packet, Patty, report.
I guess I didn't read that.
Otherwise.
So we've complied.
Oh.
We've complied everywhere we are. It's just every, it's just, when they eliminated the 50-foot, next thing they were speaking of eliminating was the 250, and they never got, they never did it. They eliminated other requirements, and that was something that they always spoke of, but they never did. There's obviously many stations, a lot of stations, that comply with it, but no one really understands the purpose of it. But definitely is achievable to comply, but the inventory is going to be more set out to the side and try to rotate through.
So you do or don't have the 250?
We do not, currently. But we don't, because we don't have a license, and we're not required to have the inventory.
License for it.
Oh.
In the township.
If we were, if we were able to get a license and we're required to get the inventory, then we would beef up our inventory.
Stamps?
No. You know, there's other categories nowadays.
The way they keep raising them.
If I could direct your attention to the provision, it says one or both of the conditions. So either you're located in neighborhood shopping center, or, and/or, you have a minimum 250,000 inventory on premises. So you can have one without the other. So you can be in a shopping center and not necessarily have to meet both conditions.
Which brings me to another question, is just as an example, Maple and Telegraph, or I'm sorry, Maple and Lasser is next to a shopping center, but they're separately owned, and so is Long Lake and Telegraph. How is that viewed? Is that viewed as being within the shopping center or being separate?
Yes, yes.
We're actually, and Maple and Lasser were within the shopping center.
Oh, you are within.
One parcel.
But I thought Long Lake and Telegraph was like separately owned.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, Long Lake and Telegraph, that is separate, because it's right next to the gas station.
But the gas station, Maple and Lasser, isn't that in B1?
Yes, that is in.
So that wouldn't qualify at all?
Good point.
It's moved there.
Good point.
So would it, would it make any sense for us to say that the 250,000 is one of the two requirements, unless the state changes it, or you just worry about it when that happens?
I think at this point, because it's part of the state requirement that we maintain that, it has no negative impact with what we're contemplating.
Because it's not unlike the 3,000, one in 3,000, that they changed it and we didn't, so you'd have to come back and change that as well.
If that turns out to be the case, I think that's fine. But that really hasn't been on our radar regarding, you know, we want investment. We want someone to invest in their premises and have a substantial inventory, because we want someone to contribute economically, you know, to our community. So it makes, it is looking for that relationship of that business owner to have that, you know, level of a business.
Whose obligation is it to verify the inventory on hand?
The State of Michigan, MLCC. They have inspectors come in.
How do you prove the cost of the inventory?
Provide invoices.
Invoices?
Yeah, current invoices on cost. And they actually spot check and count. And actually, what you brought up about the building size, I mean, that would help keep the larger, keep the smaller stores not getting the license, because I don't know how they can, with a 700-square-foot building, have that much inventory. And I believe that's the main reason why the State of Michigan put it in place.
Stamps.
Or you can do stamps.
Stamps. All right. Got it?
Got it.
Okay. Remember, again, I'm sorry. Oh, the purpose of this is to schedule a hearing, or to get a motion to approve the concept of having a hearing. That's the idea right now. And then we'll set a date if that's approved.
You're suggesting September 4?
September 4. Okay.
Okay.
Hey, sounds good. It's Wednesday after Labor Day, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So would there be another hearing at Planning, or are you talking about the board?
No, this, this is to set a public hearing at the planning commission level.
But we need a motion for that, don't we?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Make the motion.
Motion to have a hearing on September 4th. Moved and.
Support.
Moving second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next thing is introduction of a site plan, special land use request for Class C liquor license for tea times at 6565 Telegraph Road as an indoor recreational restaurant use.
Well, we'll do a combination presentation, how's that?
Okay.
As I was indicating earlier, that, hmm. Oh, I guess I did. And from the beginning. So when we were speaking earlier about the gas stations and the liquor license criteria and so forth, that if the ordinance isn't specifically allowing for a particular provision, then it's not permitted. And so here we have an example where we have a very unique, I refer to it as a hybrid. So you have this Class C liquor license request for a restaurant, and then you have this indoor golf simulation recreational activity, both of which in the township we do have provisions for. We've been talking about Class C liquor licenses in the past, and this is relevant to a restaurant. We have Class Cs for restaurants, we also have Class Cs for cinemas. And, you know, I gave you a little bit of history of, you know, cinemas were initially intended at the time that we were going through the Bloomfield Park proposal, where the Imagine was coming into the former Schubner development. And the, that, you know, project changed, but then we had the Maple Theater come on board. And so the provisions actually were relevant, you know, for that. And in looking at our ordinance, we do have recreational uses in the township, we do have them identified in our various districts in our ordinance. And so looking at, really, the nature of our cinemas and their criteria with get with restaurant uses, made sense to look at an ordinance amendment that would allow for something as unique as a indoor recreational restaurant use, to have the opportunity for a liquor license, and not just because of tea times, but we've been approached recently, in fact, even this afternoon, I received a call from someone who's interested in proposing a pickleball club, a membership club, of which, you know, shortly after discussing what those provisions are, and in the process, was, is there a liquor license available? So, you know, that's, that's a real, real-time request that we have. But there could be very, well, other types of indoor recreational uses that would be part of a special land use request. So what's been presented to you as an amendment to our zoning ordinance is a criteria that uses the term of indoor recreational restaurant use with a Class C indoor tavern license, very similar in language and formatting of our cinema zoning ordinance criteria. And such, I don't have a PowerPoint for this, but in looking at your packet, it's identifying that that particular use needs to be an integral use within a planned shopping center, subject to the following. So it's a little bit more specific as to being part of a shopping center, not a standalone. So that's, that's something I want, you know, to call out here. And that if it's going to meet the criteria of a Class C or a tavern license for an indoor recreational restaurant use, then acknowledging that the Class C liquor license is incidental to the main operation of the recreational restaurant. That the off-street parking shall be computed as part of a shared parking study for the planned shopping center. So it's not a standalone use, it's an itemized use, it is actually part of an overall planned shopping center parking analysis. Will it comply? And is there enough parking to both suit this use, as well as the rest of the uses that are part of that shopping center? And then lastly, that, you know, appropriate fees would be allowed for and established by the township as needed and by resolution. So tonight, you are also being introduced, this, this concept, this language of creating this indoor entertainment, indoor recreational use, consistent with language that we presently have with the ordinance in the B2 and the B3 district, part of a shopping center. You can read in the language how we're mirroring, how the cinema language is being addressed, you know, within our, our current ordinance, and then reflecting that in our proposed draft number 691. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer your, answer them. And we too are suggesting September 4th, should the board want to advance that to public hearing.
Yes, no questions, but I will say, I'm thrilled that we're finally getting something like this back on, before us to look at. I certainly have been an advocate for this type of use for our license with our ordinances, so we can bring in companies and opportunities such as tea time. So I'm thrilled that we're doing this and moving forward with it. It's a great idea. I think it will certainly be, you know, advantageous to the township and the type of businesses that we can attract, in which, in the long run, it's good for our residents, good for our landlords, although Stewart. And it's, it's good. I think it's, it's a win-win all the way around.
Any other questions? I just have one. We're combining two things, right? Proposal to have a hearing on this, on September 4th. And also, are we going to then also look at the special land use for hour of operation here, or is that going to also be in the hearing?
That would, that's a separate item on the agenda. I was going to, at least, should you want to move on this ordinance amendment, I was just going to give you.
Okay, I thought you said you were combining the two.
I was going to get to the overview, yes, after you took action.
So we'll do, we'll do the hearing thing first, and then we'll get back to that.
Yes, please.
Okay, very good. All right, any other questions on scheduling a hearing on September 4th? Then again, we need to, I'm sorry.
They can make a motion.
A motion.
We have the hearing on September 4th.
Second.
Moving second, same. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so now we go to this, now we'll talk about.
There we go.
The special land use for the hours of operation.
Well, it certainly didn't make sense to present something that is a unique proposal. We had a real-life example, and we've been in really good, strong conversation and sharing information with the folks with tea times. And so they have made application. This is the best way to deliver a presentation to you, so that you can really see with this new, unique new, unique use, how that would fit into the township and in this particular location. So we're at the southeast corner of Telegraph and Maple, in the, in the shopping center. Maple Telegraph Shopping Center. It's Zoned B3. It is a shopping, shopping center, as we're very familiar with. At the southerly end, there is the existing vacant, former Rebel Boxing, and an adjacent vacant tenant space that they're looking to occupy. It's 9,300 square feet. They provided a concept plan of a layout, floor plan, showing the layout of the building itself. The golf simulators are identified, up to 13 that are found on the floor plan, and then they give you a kitchen plan and a bar area as a zoom. This is intended just to give you an overview. There's a lot of information here that would be part of a site plan review application, but I went ahead and at least wanted to share some information with you. So if this, if there was support for the proposal, that you would see how this could be integrated into this shopping center. So, you know, the applicant has provided a detailed presentation, you know, it's part of a PowerPoint, so you have that in your, your packet. They're looking to have extended hours of operation that the chair indicated, going from 9:00 AM to 12:00 midnight, Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Sundays, special land use approved, to extend the hours, so that's additional. The proposal was reviewed by our various departments, and how does it meet our criteria? If we were to propose that ordinance amendment, which you just discussed a few minutes ago, then how would those provisions be able to be met by, you know, this application? And so I took liberty of looking at those criteria, very similar to a special land use request or a site plan application, and would this use be compatible? You know, of course, we're dealing with not just a standalone, but this is part of a shopping center. And that's the, the ordinance is very direct, that this is part of a shopping center, and where there's that value of the, of the shared uses, but also the shared parking analysis. And that was even presented by the, prepared and presented to the applicant, by the applicant's traffic engineer, of which our engineer also reviewed. And so there was quite an extensive traffic report, parking analysis, that was prepared by their engineer, that was reviewed by township's engineer, with a lot of discussion and reiterations, admittedly. And so the analysis that's been finally presented has been deemed acceptable by our traffic consultant. There are 225 parking spaces provided on-site, of which those that would be required for the, for the tea times, in addition to all the other uses that are found in the center, would be an adequate supply, sufficient supply, to, to meet that requirement. The circulation would not change. There's two means of ingress and egress, both from Telegraph and Maple, with a circulation, traffic pattern, and so forth, not having any impact, you know, with the occupancy of the tenant in those two locations. Police, fire, and engineering have reviewed and made some initial comments. Neither have any concerns or objections to the proposal, there's just compliance with engineering and fire standards. The floor plan was looked upon by the fire marshal and found that the, the layout is generally acceptable, and again, will be required to meet all the fire code requirements. The hours relevant to those that are presently at the, in the, the center, they range from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM on Sundays. So they're, they're not far from, you know, what is that, general hours that are found within the shopping center. The clearest, the nearest clear, okay, the nearest Class C license is found just south of this shopping center, at the Mex Restaurant, and they're open from 11:00 AM to 12:00 midnight daily. So at least got approval for those hours. So it would be consistent, you know, with that adjacent, or nearby, if you will, Class C location to the south. The, the plans that have been presented are those which are primarily just a floor plan, and then the building elevations is to accommodate, you know, the, the combined tenant space. The PowerPoint or the presentation that the applicant had submitted to us, I can show briefly with their presentation. And it gives a general overview of what to expect when you, you enter in this facility. You know, looking at, if I could just get to a picture of the floor plan, maybe I can find it. There we go. Is a very wide-open, inviting atmosphere. The, the star of the, of the tenant, I'm sure is the restaurant, but is, is the simulators. I mean, that's, that's the most amazing part of this proposal and the, in the, that business owners can tell you a little bit more about them, but that really is when you walk in, you're very impressed with the location. Andrew and I had an opportunity to go to their Rochester Hills location, which they have been up and running. And it, it's pretty amazing what they are able to provide to, you know, their customers. And at the same time, you know, they have this higher-end restaurant feel to, you know, the, the, the space as well. It's a full-service kitchen and bar area. They do talk about events, but they have the simulators that are on the periphery. And for the, you as golfers, you're probably more familiar with what those entail, you know, as far as you're engrossed into that simulation of being on a golf course and any golf course or amazing golf courses. And then how you're, you can play and plus they also have memberships and tournaments and so forth. And there's also a connection with the youth and the youth play, whether it's through school programs, open invitations and even accommodating hours because of their seasonal operations, obviously, in some respects, but also just those hours after school would be a little bit different timeframe conducive for students to attend versus after work probably would be more of an older crowd or a family crowd. So I'm just highlighting very briefly, because I know you have this information, but it is, when we speak about tea times and speak about how this would be a fit within the community, I think this helps when you see this presentation or you hear from the owners, that it really is unique and befitting, especially at the Maple and Telegraph with our proximity to, you know, our, our premier golf courses. So that summarizes my presentation. I'll answer any questions, but again, this is just an introduction, not asking you to attack, to take any action, but at least it answers maybe some questions you had when we were speaking of what the heck is an indoor recreational restaurant use. Now you know what we're referring to.
Questions here? Go ahead.
Two-minute break.
Two-minute break, okay. Two-minute, two-minute. We are, we are looking for action to prove a special land use permit for hours of operation, right?
Yep. You can't take any action tonight because there was no noticing. We didn't notice for this proposal. This is just an introduction.
Oh, okay. I thought we were, I thought we, okay, I didn't know that.
Just an introduction.
Understood.
So that you could at least have a better appreciation of what this hybrid use is that we're, we're looking at.
Okay, well, then when he comes, when he comes back, we'll see if anybody from Tea Times or anybody, well, wait, let's, we just take a two-minute, let him come back and then we'll, we'll continue.
So I'll keep talking. So this is, in addition to the hours of operation and the use itself, it's also a Class C liquor license request. So when this comes before the board, again, there'll be a variety of actions that the planning commission will be asked to consider. So you're meeting not only the, the site plan standards, the special land use standards, but also the, the Class C liquor license standards and, and so, and then the hours of operation relevant to those standards. So there's a little bit more of a comprehensive recommendation that will be coming to you at the time that we have a, a noticed meeting, of which we'd have to, you know, make sure we get, we meet all those.
So we, so we, you want to do that hours of operation then, because perhaps you might say, well, a restaurant or something with a liquor license, we don't want to do, we might. It might be different than another business. Is that what you mean? That's why we want to see with the liquor, about the liquor license first.
It's all intended to be like one proposal.
Okay. Is this going to be a new liquor license or one transfer then?
The applicant will have to answer.
Oh, okay. Well, all right, then we'll wait, wait he comes back.
And yeah, it was a great, certainly a very comprehensive package that the owners presented to us. And the other part too is, as I'm sure the owner can better communicate than myself, but they're very involved in the community. Yeah, I know in Rochester Hills they are and they plan on doing that here with the high schools and the golf, the golf teams. And it's really impressive how they get involved in the community. So I'm sure that's something that Brandon could talk to.
Yeah, why don't you, now we, thanks, Matt, why don't we continue?
Hello, everyone. I'm Brandon Chai. I'm one of the owners of Tea Times, here with my partners. So Tea Times was kind of a, just a dream project for us. Some of you may be familiar with an indoor golf facility. There were many of those, but ours is a little bit better. We, you know, the technology we have in our space is by far the best technology there is, period. There'd be 13 simulators. Each simulator, just from a cost perspective, it's about $100,000 per simulator. If you're, if you're familiar with the sport of golf, what makes our simulators different is you're actually standing as you play on a hydraulic plate that moves to simulate the undulation of a golf course, just to give you some impact in that technology. You have high-definition cameras looking at you that measure your swing. You can play in tournaments indoors with the people in the facility and you can play with people all around the world. A little bit of background on myself, I've been in the restaurant business for about 15 years. So this isn't like, you know, some quick bowling alley type food. We are a full-service restaurant. So you're going to have a chef there. People will be able to come in and eat. They can eat completely independent of playing golf or they can play golf and they can eat. So, so you have that. I appreciate Mr. Barnett talking about the stuff that we do for the community. In Rochester Hills, where we built our first location, there are three high schools. You have Stony Creek, you have Rochester and you have Adams High School. The boys and girls teams all play and train at Tea Times at no cost. We do not charge them. So the coaches are there during the offseason or when it rains, you know, during the season. If they need the place to come in and practice, we've never denied them the facility. They come in and they train. We use the space for fundraisers as well. We've done some, we've had NFL Players Association has done two events at our space. Carmanos Cancer Institute has done, done an event at our space, really just to get together and also we love to showcase the technology. It's, it's really cool. And when we thought about this, obviously the city of Rochester Hills really embraced us. They want us to do business. They granted us a liquor license. They really paved the way for us to go in. And when we thought about doing another one, we thought to ourselves, we're better than Bloomfield Township. I mean, where we are, it's, it's such a great community and for such a high-end facility, we think, we think it fits really well. Did you have any questions about the space that I can answer?
Successful.
Yeah. And it doesn't rain inside there and there's no wind.
Doesn't.
And then no bugs.
It's always sunny and it's, it's always light inside of Tea Times.
Sunny on a golf course, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Anybody have any questions or? Okay, so then.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Under the ordinance, they couldn't apply for this as a restaurant, but because they have this Tea Times, you would need that new amended ordinance to be able to accommodate them?
Correct.
So if somebody were to put in a restaurant and have a bocce court, they couldn't do that either without the modification?
If it was a very incidental insignificant amenity, and we, we had this discussion because if you, if you look at their operation, it is, they're entrenched in both the golf simulation and the restaurant use. It's not as if you have a separate room in the back that has, is like a little small arcade, which is more ancillary to a restaurant. You know, that's what we've been customary with as far as, you know, those type of uses. This is a little, this is much different than that, where it's, and as I said, it's a hybrid. You know, it's bringing that recreational use, very high-end recreational use with the Class C liquor license restaurant establishment and mirroring the two. And it deserves to be recognized as a, a new use.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? So we, we have no action to take then, right?
Correct.
Just thank you for the information, I guess.
Yeah, and we'll, we will process this along the way simultaneously to the ordinance provision, so we will have this on your agenda for September 4th.
All of it.
Yes.
Both.
Yes.
All right. Moving on, anybody have anything, not on the agenda, they want to bring up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see everybody. Thank you.
Next planning commission then meeting would be Monday, August 19th. And I guess we need just a motion to adjourn.
It's moved.
It's moved and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.